Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the City of Pasadena, Texas Council Meeting, September 4, 2018. We'll have invocation by James Guthrie and Councilman Shane Bind will be leading us in the prayer. Please stand.
Is this my box?
You say pray more often, don't you?
Yes. Let us pray. Lord God, Heavenly Father, we come before you, dear Lord, ever more grateful. Grateful for the gift of this mayor and council and the gifts that they bring to our community. We ask that you be with them today as they deliberate the business of the city of Pasadena. More importantly, Lord, we thank you for the gift of life, eternal life, through the birth, death, and resurrection of your beloved Son, Jesus Christ. We thank you for that eternal life. We ask that you bless our first responders, both police and fire. We ask that you bless our various school districts as they usher children back to learning for the semester. We ask that you keep them safe. All this we ask, in Jesus' holy name. Amen.
If you would, please join me in saying the pledge to the greatest nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if you now please join me in the greatest state in the nation, I pledge allegiance to Texas.
Honor. Texas is grand. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, indivisible.
Y'all try.
Go ahead, Thomas.
I'd like to say good morning to everyone. I hope everyone had a wonderful Labor Day weekend. With all the rain, hopefully you had some good family quality time and maybe took in a movie or did something special. And with that, Mayor, I pass.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Villarreal.
Thank you for being here today. Like Councilman Shane Bind said, it's been a lot of rain. There's probably going to be some more. So we appreciate everybody showing up this type of weather. We had a, I had the pleasure of going out Saturday to the Union Cook-Off. See the two union members here. It was great, great turnout. Had some good music. So it was, it was a good turnout. And with that, I pass.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Lehman.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out this morning. Want to remind everybody, if you're still making plans or haven't made plans, National Night Out coming up first Tuesday in October. And like Councilman Villarreal said, I went out to the barbecue cook-off, got some good food, met a lot of people I didn't know, met some I did know. But overall, it was a good day. With that, I pass.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess all of you are aware that there's going to be a hurricane in the Gulf. Just be prepared. It's predicted to go to Biloxi or eastern New Orleans, but just be prepared. And also, I went to the AFL-CIO picnic. They had a great time. Got to hear some good music by the Blues Brothers. I asked them to play a couple of songs for me, and one of them was far, far away, but they wouldn't, wouldn't, wouldn't play that one. That's a joke, far, far away. But anyway, watch the hurricane, sir, and stay safe. That I pass.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Casados.
Yes, for future reference, last name was Casados. Yes, sir, thank you. Thank you. But yeah, thank you, everyone, for coming out. We appreciate it, men and women in blue. We appreciate you guys being out here. I wish there was more seating. You didn't have to stand, stand up so long, but we appreciate you being here. Also, I'd like to say, we went out to the AFL-CIO Union and barbecue cook-off. We had a great time. Like the council members before said, we, we got to go out there and play some music out there, myself and Councilman Wheeler. And we have a good little, a good little band, I think. So we played some good music and we had a great time. Thank everyone for being out. I'd also like to send my condolences out to the Bledsoe family, James, see that he's passed away, and my condolences and heartfelt condolences go out to the family. So with that, I pass.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Wheeler.
Thank you, Mayor. It looks like we all went out to the AFL-CIO barbecue this weekend. It was, it was a good time. Last year, about this time, Harvey hit. So I mean, it got, it got canceled. So it was good to see kind of life turn back to normal just a little bit. And I know there's a hurricane in the Gulf and the city, we have a great emergency management department here, so just stay tuned if anything does happen. You never know how those hurricane models play out, you know, the spaghetti models, and they, they don't know where they, much more than any of us, but they predict it's not going to be coming towards us. So just stay in contact with the city, and if anything does happen, we'll let you know. That I pass.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Katon.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming out on this rainy day. Yeah, I know, we do have some seats up front. I'd be just like a pastor at church. If anybody wants to sit down up front. Anyway, thanks to former Councilman James Guthrie for the invocation. And I'd like to congratulate the recipients of the service awards that's here today, Daryl, Diana, and Ed. Thank you for all the years of service for the city of Pasadena. Well, I pass, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Assistant is wanting to speak to council. Robert Jeter.
I can be on the earth.
Excuse me?
If, yes.
Yes, I am.
Before, before I begin, I want to point out that after last meeting, before I had a chance to leave, an 83-year-old woman upset over the comments I made came up to me and threatened my life right here in this very room. Now, obviously, the fact that I'm still here means that threat is not credible, but I do think that behavior is outrageous and almost as absurd as how this administration has treated the city budget. Last week, I had to sell my first vehicle, a white 89 Dodge Ram Charger that my family had purchased from me back in 2008 for my high school graduation. Didn't want to sell it, but after years of trying to save up to keep it running, it became apparent that it wasn't going to happen, so it sat in my driveway collecting rust. Ran fine, just could never get it to pass inspection. See, government does this thing called past regulations that often serve as barriers to make it harder for honest folks to get things done. And government also likes to raise fines and fees to increase its own coffers rather than leave people alone. Government doesn't create wealth, it can only redistribute. And in the process of that redistribution, it often destroys wealth. My understanding is that we have a proposed tax rate increase of six cents per $100 of home value. This is more than six times the nine-tenths of a penny that this council voted against last year in the wake of Harvey. The way council is going to justify this is by saying it's for the increased insurance costs for city employees. I believe this is true. I also believe that if the administration hadn't been engaged in grotesquely excessive spending, that we wouldn't need to hold employee benefits hostage to justify the tax hike. We have money for half a million dollars on a single hole of the golf course, but not to cover our own employees. If we, as a city, spent less on wants and more on needs, we would be far more fiscally responsible. I'm not saying don't pay our employees what they're worth, but we shouldn't be using that as justification for reaming the taxpayers either. Lastly, I've never been anti-cop, just anti-corruption. It's been brought to my attention that Pasadena Police Union has made some concessions towards fiscal responsibility within the city. I would like to commend them and Brian Lithcomb for taking the lead on that. Good job, guys. Thank you, council.
Thank you, sir. Tissue banks.
I just, can y'all hear me? I'm short. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank Mayor Wagner and the City of Pasadena for, and the Pasadena Chamber of Commerce and the Pasadena Independent School District for all of their help with the first annual Fill the Bus campaign. We were able to fill three school buses with school supplies, and it was wonderful. So many children in Pasadena got free school supplies. In fact, what we did was we allowed the teachers to come on Friday before school started to the PISD warehouse, and they were able to bring a box and fill it for their classes and their kids. And it was a wonderful sight. But next year, I have a different goal. I want to make sure every elementary child gets a free box of crayons. That means 15,301 kids are in first through fourth grade. And I want to make sure the teachers get a free box of Kleenex, because those are things that teachers are buying and paying for out of their own pocket. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank ABC Dental, Albert Marl, Barnes &amp; Nobles, Basial Medical Center, Bayway Lincoln, Best Western, Burnett Specialties, Candlewood Suites, Community Health Choice, Deep Water Neighborhood, Dixie Chemical, Frost Bank, Gray Star Real Estate, Hilton Garden Inn, Interactive College, Johnson Space Center Credit Union, Kindred Hospital, Pasadena Public Library, Life Touch Photography, Metter Staffing, Med Express, Moose Lodge, Mu Alpha, New Dimension Caregivers, Nike, Outback State House, Pasadena Bay Area Junior Forum, Pasadena Interfaith Manor, Pasadena Refining, Pasadena Rotary South, Patients Medical Center, Phelps Insurance, Plumbers Union 68, Prime Realty, Puffers Finn, Texan Bank, the Serrano Agency of Farmers Insurance, Thriveant Financial, Underwood Baptist Church, Vern Cox, Wise Tutoring, and Zachary Industrial for all of their help with Fill the Bus. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Jed and Ed, y'all come up. That's, that's good helpers.
Morning, Mayor. Jeff Wagner and city councilman. I'd like to thank you for letting me talk today. As many of you may know, my daughter Christina Wells has advanced to be a semifinalist on the popular TV show American Got Talent. She is going to perform on September the 11th, 7:00 PM on NBC. Christina is a hometown girl. She lives here, and she is a registered nurse helping her community. I'm just going to say that.
Okay.
Buenos dias, como muchos de ustedes saben, mi hija Christina Wells ha avanzado para ser semifinalista en el popular programa de televisión, America's Got Talent. Ella se presentará el 11 de septiembre a las 7:00 en la noche en NBC. Christina es una chica de esta comunidad. Ella vive aquí y es una enfermera registrada que ayuda a su comunidad.
Christina has performed at the city Pasadena Tree Lighting and volunteered each year to sing for the Vern Cox Christmas Party. She believes in the power of music to heal, and she wants to share her gift.
Christina se ha presentado en la iluminación del árbol de Navidad de la ciudad de Pasadena y se ofrecer como voluntaria todos los años y canta para la fiesta de Navidad de Vern Cox. Ella cree en el poder de la música para sanar y quiere compartir sus talentos con los demás.
I am here to ask everyone to please vote for my daughter on September the 11th. This is how you can vote. Download the app on your phone by going to nbc.com/agt. You can also vote 10 times to the number they show on the, show on that night she performs. Please help my daughter make her dreams come true and let's show the world that great things do come from Pasadena, Texas. Thank you.
Les quiero pedir por favor que todos voten por mi hija el 11 de septiembre. Puede descargar la aplicación en su teléfono o ir a nbc.com/agt. También puede voten 10 veces al número que muestran la noche que ella realiza. Por favor, ayuda a mi hija a hacer su sueño realidad y domestremos al mundo que grandes cosas pueden venir de Pasadena, Texas. Gracias.
Thank y'all so much. And vote Christina. You bet. Thank you so much. Hey, Luanne, y'all just stay up there, and you do yours.
Mayor, council, good morning. And first of all, I'd like to say thank you to everyone who's voted for Eric so far. We've got a little bit longer to go, September the 14th. And so we're here to ask for your vote, for everyone in the city to vote for Eric, Nikki, Together, if we can get enough votes, it will win $25,000 for our senior center, and that goes to senior activities and things that can, that the seniors can enjoy and to enhance their life. And we just ask that everyone in the city vote, you know, you can vote every day. You can vote on computers, you can vote on cellphones, you can vote on browsers, different browsers. And, and we just ask that you all put one more great push forward, because together we can do this, and it would bring a lot of joy to our seniors at the senior center. So, and go ahead.
And also, if you have any questions, call Madison Job Senior Center at 713-477-0175, and we'd be happy to talk to you about voting.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll tell you how to download it on, on your phone. And I'm not real good at those things, but Eric programmed it into my phone, so I just punch a button, just about. And so give us a call if you have problems with that. And again, thank you very much. It takes teamwork to do things like this and to vote, and to, to vote for Ed's daughter. She's a darling, and she also sang at our Fourth of July celebrations. And what a voice she's got. And so, thank you.
Thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Allen Teague.
In front of you, you have a little piece of paper there talking about fire trucks. We tried selling these fire trucks on Rene Bates. In the past, we've had real good luck, but this time around, evidently, there wasn't any, any takers. So what we're doing, we're going to have our auction September the 15th at our location that we have six times a year. We have 100-plus abandoned and seized vehicles, more abandoned than, than not. Then we have some city vehicles, surplus vehicles that we sell. We pride ourselves in our resale. We do a, the guys do a great job of it. I just show up and look ugly, so it's a 3% buyer's premium, cash, MasterCard, American Express. We sell them as-is, where is. One of the things about these fire trucks, what we're going to do is we're going to sell them at our auction, but at the same time, they will be going, once they come up for bid, they will be going online and live across the United States to try to get some people to buy these from us. Because what this money does, it goes back into our maintenance fund, and we're able to buy equipment down the road, emergency equipment, you know, it could be fire trucks, it could be garbage trucks, whatever it may be. But we, we really do pride ourselves in our resale. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, sir. Christina Womack.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor, city council members. I am here today to share about several events we have going on at the Pasadena Chamber, but want to first let you all know that today is an exciting day. As we were here, an email went out to all of our members and community members that the launch of our new Pasadena Chamber website. And so two years ago, our Director of Marketing and Special Events, Suzette McDowell, who's here with us today, launched our rebranding efforts, and the completion of this website is the final phase of that. And so we invite everybody to go check out the new website. It's a more user-friendly, versatile site that's mobile-friendly and compatible on all devices. And so we appreciate everybody's support in that. If you are a chamber member and you normally register for events, then you will get an email today as well with new username information and password to set up, so take advantage of that. We're excited about the launch of that and being able to showcase Pasadena and the chamber that we are so proud of. In terms of events coming up at the chamber, next Tuesday, September 11th, the Pasadena Little Theater is putting on the 110 Stories. This is a play that depicts the activities from September 11th as told from the standpoint of people that we can relate to that experienced that, not what was in the news. This event, although PLT is putting it on, is actually a fundraiser for all of our first responders, for the firemen and the police officers. So tickets start at only $25, and there are sponsorships available, so please make plans to attend that. We also, in partnership with the Harris County District Clerk's Office, are going to have a passport fair at the Pasadena Chamber on Tuesday, September 18th. So if you want to skip the lines elsewhere, you can come to the Pasadena Chamber office for new or renewals. And that's open to the community and their families, so not just chamber members. And then we also have our Pasadena Hispanic Business Council Breakfast on October 10th at the Serrano Agency, and this will be on identity theft, so you can come learn how to keep your information safe. And then before long, the Texas Invitational Basketball Tournament will be here, and so we need your help in volunteering for this tournament. That is a partnership between the city, the school district, and the business community, just like Fill the Bus was. And so it's another opportunity for you to engage and to give back. And so you can look at texasinvitational.com for all the volunteer needs. And then last but not least, Taste of the Town is underway, and so the Greatest Taste of the Town tickets are available. That event will be on November 1st this year, so get your tickets early. There is a VIP access opportunity to get, get in early. And we also have our raffle going on for a mini goat cart for only $10. You can stop by the chamber to purchase your ticket. So thank you all for your support.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, brings us down to presentations.
Mayor and council, we'll be honoring three employees today for service awards that they've received here at the city. The first employee, and after they get their awards, they'll be heading back to their office to get back to work. The first goes to Daryl Anthony. He's got 35 years of service with the city. Come on up, Daryl. He's receiving an inscribed clock there. Thank you very much, Daryl. He's assigned to our fleet division. The next employee is Diana Curtis. She's got 30 years of service with, she's assigned to the city controller's office, and she's receiving an inscribed watch. And last is Ed Hovit, I think, 25 years of service, and he's with our golf course. He'll be receiving a gold watch. I'm sorry, gold ring, gold ring. That's it. They're, they're going to be heading back to their, their office, because Diana says she's got to make sure she gets our checks right now. So thank y'all very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, council brings it down to presentation in minutes, August 21st.
Motion.
Motion Casados, second by Shane Bind.
Mayor, excuse me. Don't we have a volunteer award on here also?
They said Eddie, oh, there's Eddie right there. Yes.
Is that what?
Yes.
Okay, I was told he was not here.
Thank you, Bruce. I appreciate that, because I did not see Eddie sitting there.
Let's see. Trying to see here. Yes, Eddie Perez, he's got a volunteer award, and I'll have to get him his award, because I was told he was not here. Come on up here, Eddie.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman Lehman. Thank you, Eddie, for all you do.
You're welcome. Thank you, guys. Good job.
Okay, we had a second. And any questions?
Mayor, who were the motions?
Shane Bind was first, and I was second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Progress payments?
Motion.
Motion Lehman, second Wheeler. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Brings us down to personnel changes. A.
Motion.
Where are we at here? I got it right here. Financial resolutions.
Motion.
Motion Lehman, second Harrison. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now it brings us down to personnel.
Motion.
Motion Shane Bind.
Second.
Second Wheeler. Any question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Window. Okay, brings us down to final readings. Madam Secretary.
Ordinance 2018-109, purchase of one United Cooler air conditioning unit for the Pasadena Police CSI Department from Carrier Commercial Services, $52,359. Ordinance 2018-110, contract with Sears Engineers, Inc. for design services for the Golden Acres 24-inch Fourth Main Project, CIPWWO49, for total appropriation, $232,505 from the 2017 Certificate of Authorization Fund balance account, ordinance 2018-111. Annual consulting agreement with Gallagher Benefit Services, Inc., $31,500. Ordinance 2018-112, amending the code of ordinance to chapter 36, traffic, article 6, speed regulations, section 36, 145.1, 25 miles per hour zone, and section 36, 146, regular established speed zones.
Motion Lehman, second Casados. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading is Madam Secretary.
Ordnance 2018-114, agreement with B&amp;B Consulting Group for annual support for implementing and maintaining an industrial pretreatment program for the city, $50,000.
Motion.
Motion Shane Bind.
Second.
Second Wheeler. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordnance 2018-115, purchase of 2019 Deuce and DX 210WE five-wheeled excavator US-50 package from the RB Everton Company, $237,056.
Motion.
Motion Casados, second Wheeler. Any question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordnance 2018-116, purchase of two 2019 International HV607 garbage trucks, one 2019 2020 International MV607 chassis for the Altec, crane body, one 2019 International 7506x4 chassis with Vector 2100, unit one 2019, Vector 21OOI sewer truck, one 2019 International HV507 brush dump truck, and two 2019 International HV607 grapple dump trucks from Southwest International Trucks, $1,438,655.29.
Motion.
Motion Shane Bind, second by Katon. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordnance 2018-117, purchase of four Ford F-250 regular cab pickup trucks and two 2017 Ford Explorer SUV utility vehicles from Salisbury Ford, $177,700.
Motion Lehman, second Villarreal. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Resolution, I mean, ordinance 2018-118, accepting, approving, and adopting the valuation and assessment of all real and personal property in the city of Pasadena, Harris County, Texas, for the 2018 tax year, designating the Harris County Tax Assessor Collector as a responsible official to prepare effective enrollment rates and certifying a 2018 tax collection rate, providing for a repealing clause and containing a severability clause.
Motion.
Motion Katon.
Second.
Second Shane Bind. Any questions?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I want to say that this is allowing Harris County to do evaluations of property values here in Pasadena, and as always, we expect those property home values will go up. That I pass.
Thank you, sir. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordnance 2018-119, acceptance of a grant of $421,616.64 from the Texas General Land Office for the 2015 flood allocation for rehabilitation of sanitary sewer lines.
Motion Casados.
Second.
Second Lehman. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordnance 2018-120, purchase and installation of computer components for the city's emergency alert siren system from CrossPoint Communications, $121,880.
Motion.
Second Shane Bind, second Wheeler. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordnance number 2018-121, purchase of 52 Ford and six Chevrolet vehicles from Salisbury Ford, like Country Chevrolet, $1,701,523.6.
Motion.
Motion Shane Bind.
Second.
Second Villarreal. Any questions?
Mayor.
Yeah, what's going on?
On this item, the $1.7 million, what this is, is replacing city vehicles from as early as the year 2004. And what this will do is upgrade our fleet, and it'll help our city workers do their jobs more efficiently, and it'll provide better city services to our citizens.
Thank you, sir. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolutions, Madam Secretary.
Resolution 2018-96, accepting a donation of breakfast sandwiches valued at $250 from McDonald's.
McDonald's for the Team Up to Clean Up event on September 8, 2018, for breakfast for volunteers.
Motion.
Motion Wheeler, second Lehman. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Resolution 2018-97, accepting a donation of 60 pizzas valued at $600 from Pop Line Pizza for the Team Up to Clean Up event on September 7, 2018, for lunch for volunteers.
Motion.
Motion Wheeler, second Casados. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Resolution 2018-98, accepting an in-kind donation of lunch valued at $150 from Olive Garden and monetary donations totaling $4,950 from Olive Tree Mediterranean Grill, Industrial Storage Services, and TIRR Memorial Harmon for the 2018 wheelchair wind-up softball tournament.
Motion.
Motion Wheeler, second Harrison. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Resolution 2018-99, accepting monetary donations of $3,000 from SCR Construction Partners for the 2018 wheelchair wind-up softball tournament and the annual Christmas tree lighting.
Motion.
Motion Katon.
Second.
Second Casados. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Resolution 2018-100, accepting a donation, 30 backpacks filled with school supplies valued at $450 from ABC Dental for door prizes at the Kaboom Design Day event on August 15, 2018, at Odell Recreation Center.
Motion.
Motion Lehman, second Villarreal. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Resolution 2018-101, accepting a donation of breakfast food valued at $500 from Chick-fil-A for the Team Up to Clean Up event on September 7, 2018, for breakfast for volunteers.
Motion.
Motion Shane Bynum, second Villarreal. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Resolution 2018-102, accepting a donation, $2,000 from Lyndale Chemical Company for the purchase of lockout kits for the Pasadena Police Station.
Motion.
Motion Shane Bynum, second Lehman. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Resolution 27, 2018-103, accepting a donation of Topsoil valued at $1,500 from the Houston Food Bank for community gardens.
Motion Katon.
Second.
Second Casados. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Resolution 2018-104, accepting a monetary donation, $600 from Paralyzed Veterans of America, Texas Chapter, for the 2018 wheelchair wind-up softball tournament.
Motion.
Motion Shane Bynum, second Villarreal. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Resolution 2018-105, accepting a donation, $200 from Pinnacle Asset Integrity Services, LLC, for public education programs.
Motion.
Motion Shane Bynum, second Katon. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Resolution 2018-106, authorizing the mayor to execute and the city secretary to attest general and no litigation certificate of the city of Pasadena and certificate of approval relating to issuance of multifamily housing revenue bonds by Southeast Texas Housing Finance Corporation for the Bay Shore Towers Apartments Multifamily Project located in the city of Pasadena.
Motion.
Motion Wheeler, second Casados. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Resolution 2018-107, approving grant application in agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation for $179,926 to conduct a comprehensive vehicular traffic enforcement program.
Motion.
Motion Wheeler, second Shane Bynum. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Villarreal.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, Villarreal made it.
Thank you. Resolution 2018-108, approving grant application in agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation for $23,938.24 to conduct a commercial motor vehicle traffic enforcement program.
Motion.
Motion Shane Bynum, second Lehman. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Resolution 2018-109, a resolution by roll call vote scheduling two public hearings, September 18, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. and October 2, 2018, at 10:00 a.m. in the Council Chamber, City Hall, for the purpose of hearing public comments on the proposal to adopt a 2018 tax rate of 0.615446 per $100 value, which is greater than the 2018 effective tax rate of 0.556430 per $100 value, and authorizing the city secretary to publish a notice of the 2018 tax year proposed property tax rate for the city of Pasadena at least seven days prior to the first scheduled hearing. And we need a roll call vote, Mayor.
Okay, let's make a motion. Shane Bynum, second Lehman. Okay, we'll start our vote.
Is there discussion on this, Mayor?
Okay, discussion.
Who's second is, who's second?
Lehman.
Lehman.
Okay. I guess I'll go first here. This is a proposed tax increase. If we were to accept the same, the rollback rate of .556, that means the citizens of Pasadena this next coming year would pay a property tax rate of .556 or .55.6 cents per $100 valuation on their home. This increase in taxes would be 61.5 cents. That's about a 6%, or I'm sorry, a 6 cents increase, which equates to a 10.6% increase in just the rate alone. That doesn't account for the increase in property value. So if your home goes up in value, not are you, not only are you paying an increase of 10.6% on the rate, but you're gonna pay on top of that whatever increase is the valuation of your home. We've had, well, it really wasn't much of a budget workshop. Council wasn't allowed to ask any questions, but in our budget, we did not account for any employee raise for police officers or city employees. So in our budget so far, there's been no cost of living increase for employees. On top of that, we just passed an industrial agreement which gave a 30% reduction. Well, what I'm saying is, is if the industrial zone were to pay the same level of property tax that we're asking citizens to pay, they would be paying $25 million a year. We're only asking them to pay 17.5 a year, which is equivalent of a 30% discount. So in the same month, we're asking these multi-billion dollar corporations to, to pay at a 30% discount, we're increasing property taxes on working families 10.6% and not even giving our budgeting for our city employees to have a cost of living increase. I think this is, is not fiscally wise. It's not fair to working families, and it's especially not fair, given that yesterday was Labor Day. I'm not gonna support a tax increase, and I don't even want to see it go to a hearing. That'll pass.
Thank you. Any comment? We'll go for a roll call vote. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, so I'm kind of, I guess, in the same boat here. I guess not everybody's surprised about that, right? But let me say this, we didn't have a budget workshop. One of the main things that I'm really concerned with is the fact that we've had numerous things be increased on us this, this past year. We've had our garbage rates go up. We've had our water rates go up. We're not talking about an increase of 10.6% going up. We're giving industrial districts a break. If we were to annex those guys, I know I brought this up last week, we're talking about an additional $4.5 to $5 million annually that we could bring into the city. On our actual budget, Mayor and everybody was very proud of, we're gonna be bringing in $2.8 million more this year in tax revenue. If that's the case, and we're happy with the $2.8 million, why are we increasing taxes again? Not to mention the fact that he said that we're gonna be keeping the same amount of employees, and that personnel will be staying the same. Now, is this tax revenue, this tax increase, we're gonna, I don't know, I guess, hire new employees, or whatever the case may be. I, I, there's no reason for this to go on. We have money in the fund balance to give our employees a cost of living increase, okay? The reason why some of these things have been going on is because there's been excessive spending, okay? There's a lot of projects and things of that nature that the mayor, we didn't account for in the budget. They didn't put it in the budget because they wanted the, the budget to look really, really good. Hey, we got a lot of money here. Well, guess what? That money's going to other projects as well, that they haven't accounted for. There is money for a cost of living increase. This tax increase right here, mayor tried to do this last year. We talked him down, we got it down to the rollback tax rate. The other thing I'm concerned with is that this rollback tax rate that they're proposing right here, I need to do some research, because last I checked, there was only supposed to be an eight, or 6% increase max that you could do on the rollback. This is well above that.
Thank you, sir. Again, we're really discussing a public hearing. Y'all's comments are definitely for the public hearing. It shouldn't be here, but I allowed that. And again, the budget, everything we do here is in the budget, and y'all vote on. There's nothing hidden.
It is hidden.
Sir, you're out of order. You're out of order, and I allowed you to talk, and I shouldn't.
Well, I appreciate that.
You bet. But my point is this, everything in the budget is in the budget. There's nothing hidden from this administration.
It's not.
Again, sir, you're out of order. One more time, sir, and you're gonna be, you're gonna be asked to leave the room. Why would you want to do that?
Well, that'd be just fine with me. I'll tell you what, this is very important.
Officer, this is.
This is very important, and this has to do with our taxpayers.
Wait a minute, point of information, the mayor can't throw them out with a vote of council. It takes five votes, majority of council. Read your Robert Rudolph order.
I did.
Well, read it again. You're wrong.
Sammy, please leave. Okay, that brings us down to a roll call vote.
I'm not through discussion.
Council, you, you can stay for the roll call vote, if, if you choose to. Okay. Do that, thank you. As long as it, as long as it applies to saying yes or no to a public hearing, we're not discussing the budget.
Well, it does apply to it. This is, let me speak.
Go ahead, sir.
I got a right to speak. And the mayor's right, it's a yes or no on this roll call vote, but I wanna get my position out where I am. I don't think we should even have this yes or no vote.
The law allows it, sir.
I've talked to business people the other day. Don't interrupt me when I'm talking.